The President. Good morning. The Council is in committee and we will continue to scrutinize the appropriation bill 2018. Mr. Andrew Wen.
Sorry, a moment, please. Good morning, Chairman. I speak on my amendment to the budget and that is Head 53, Subhead 000, and I am proposing a slash of $4 million and that is equivalent to the whole year pay for the Secretary for Home Affairs. This is a very difficult debate. Why? I think we are beating around the bush here. In the whole course of the debate, a lot of government officers are not here. Even if items relating to their portfolio are being discussed, they are not here. Of course, they will say that other government officials will assist them. We are like talking to the war. I don't mind about this so much. In this council, legislators and government offices are busy and it may not be possible for them to be here the whole way through. But what I care about is whether our opinions are heeded to by the government. But unfortunately, in the past two decades, our experience shows that the government doesn't hear the public's views and we are like talking to a brick wall. We have a population of 7.3 million. I am one of the 35 directly elected members. I'm from the Democratic camp. We get support from the public, but then we get few seats here in the council. So things are difficult for us. So I cherish this opportunity where we can have a debate. So don't mind me digressing here a bit, Chairman. You would stop me from speaking time to time. I get angry because I cherish this opportunity to have a debate. We don't know whether the government will heed our views, but we do have a constitutional and political duty to speak our minds. I've been involved in the political career for quite a long time. I am quite frustrated. I wonder how I can help take forward the issues of concern to the public. How can I do more in promoting certain policies, make the society more just? So it's very difficult. I believe a majority of legislators would not disagree to my view. I would like to do it. But I think things are difficult. The pro-establishment camp members have been talking heatedly and they are criticizing us for proposing to slash the budget. So do you mean that you don't agree to the government devoting more resources to improve our services? I must make a clarification on that. They were mentioning about a move to propose slashing of the budget, but they didn't say why we would like to do that. This is the only opportunity to pressure the government to do something. This is the only way we can do it. While we have this table knife, but then you have the chopper guarding the public covers. So you think we are under wrong. Because of the constraints of the Constitution and the rules of procedure, we can't propose increasing the budget. So very often, well, the public would ask me, "Andrew, why are you not proposing increasing the budget? Why are you criticizing Lau Kong-wa if he has paid his cut? Then, I mean, things will not get better." Well, what we want to do is that we want to use this way to push the government to work, to take action. But while this year, as in past years, our efforts will fail. And, well, but we can't say because of the possibility of failure, we will not grasp the opportunity to voice our concerns. Why will we fail? Well, let's look at the composition of the legislature. Well, certain members have made such unreasonable remarks. If you ask me, am I sincere? Do I really mean to slash Lau Kong-wa's salary? If he does well, then I would not ask for such a proposal. But I will also fail in my amendment, I believe. Now, after hearing our views, I wonder whether the pro-establishment camp members would be convinced, but I don't think that's possible at all. Now, for the appropriation bill this year, why there is so much dissatisfaction? Because we have many social problems which have not been addressed by a redistribution of wealth here. We talk about housing issues, subdivided units, universal retirement protection, welfare, elderly homes. So many issues are at hand for us to fix. So... The appropriation bill... Well, it's related to the social situation, the distribution of power, and the composition of legal. Now, with such deficiencies in our council, we still would like to discharge our constitutional duty. According to the Basic Law, we have the authority to approve public funding and the public funding must be reasonable or otherwise we will not support it. But unfortunately, in the past few years and also for this year, there are flaws in the budget. Well, somebody will say that a budget can never be perfect. Some legislators yesterday said that, "Well, no government in the world will present a budget which satisfies everyone." I agree to that. But in Hong Kong, can we model after the more advanced societies where the budget is supported by the majority of the public, wins applause from the majority of the public? Maybe we can conduct a survey to make sure that we have the popular mandate. But unfortunately, this budget gets the lowest score among all budgets. Well, it's not that they are not giving out money to the public, but we wonder where the money has gone to. Will it be benefiting those with vested interests, the conglomerates? So the government must allay our worries. Unfortunately, the government fails to do that. And at the same time, in the distribution of resources, the government is skewed towards certain parties. They admit that the public covers are flushed with money and they are willing to give money back to their society. Mr. Peter Shil, he's from the business sector and he advocates building of the economy, we should stimulate the economy. We agree to that because the public will also benefit. But the problem lies in the fact that where the government is devoting resources to stimulate economy, but the public is not benefiting. So what's the problem here? We seem to be devoting a lot of money to build infrastructure projects and some members even say that without proper infrastructures, workers will get out of job. If we look at our figures, we see that there has been a longstanding manpower shortage and for many infrastructure projects, this is also the situation. Well, this is a kind of distorted argument that is always aired in this council. Now, if we are to comment on the budget and the reasonable distribution of resources, it will not be that difficult. But I think we are not getting to the cross of the problem. We should not be discussing just the debate, I mean, the budget, but also what kind of council should we have in Hong Kong? What of government we should have in Hong Kong to make sure that there is reasonable distribution of wealth and people's interests are safeguarded? Land issues is the most serious problem in Hong Kong. It's agreed by 90% of the public. Why am I moving this motion? Because I am infuriated. Chairman, I look calmer today. I would not say that I am let down. If I am disappointed, then I will not be still be advocating for justice when I speak. Now, today, this morning, I'm talking about docking Mr. Lau Kong-wa's pay for the whole year. I don't believe that this amendment will be endorsed. There are so many loyalists supporting the budget and they will definitely vote against this amendment. So he stays calm while he isn't here today. Well, let Andrew Wen move this motion. I will not be hurt in any way. What I'm concerned most in relation to the budget is housing and land. Well, but then there is little mentioning of that issue in the budget. Well, there is little mentioning of this very important issue. And that is related to Head 53. Housing and land are in short supply. The government has been resorting to always means to resolve the problem. Mr. Michael Wong is trying to identify land. But while the land is set to be available, it's quite inflated. And then the secretary said that children's living in subdivided units are in applied and they are floating all options like PPP and say that they can't invoke land resumption ordinance because that would be risk and they dare not touch the country parks because there is the country parks ordinance in place. Now, we are coming to the cross of the matter. We are putting so much effort in the big debate. We're arguing about issues. We try to get more land, to build hospitals, to build elderly homes, etc. But surprisingly, Lau Kong-wa, Secretary for Home Affairs, he was causing or he was having this small debate on private recreational leases. Well, if not for the members who raise this issue, this issue will go unnoticed. And surprisingly, the government has released two consultation papers which are in conflict with each other. One is on identifying land and the shortest or the quickest fixed solution is the golf course, which has an area of 120 hectares. And earlier this year, we endorsed the reclamation in East Lantang. We're talking about 130 hectares. And so this golf course is even larger and Hong Shui Kiu and Yuen Long South Development covers a bigger area. So this golf course alone is similar in size as a new development area. So if we go by the conditions of the leases and try to take back the land in 2020, that would be a great assistance. Now, by 2026, we need only 49 hectares to build public housing, only 49 hectares. But surprisingly, the secretary acts in a way which runs against the overall policy of the government. Well, that's at least what he says. Well, at least you should put up a show. How come that you are doing things so in an unsightly way? And within a short span of six months, there are two consultation papers released which are in conflict with each other. And so you are sort of dragging our feet in identifying land. Now, the chief executive saying that the government is not doing justice to the children's subdivided units and something must be done for them. But then, surprisingly, this bureau is doing something like that. Now, if we get the outcome from the two consultation papers for the big debate on land supply, that might be the option of resuming land from the golf course, a partial part of it. And then there is this other option of renewing the leases on a 21-plus-15-year approach. I believe the majority of the members of the public, especially those who are inadequately housed, will agree to my view. Those on the waiting list on PRH, when they say know that we need only 49 hectares by 2026 and then there is another plot which can be resumed by 2020, then we can solve the problem immediately.
Some people might not like the idea, but we would have to gauge the interests of different people in the society. And I think Mr. Lau Kong-wa has not been doing his job. That's why I moved this amendment. Thank you. Mr. Lam Ching Ting.
Chairman, I speak again urging legal members to support my amendments. Requesting the deduction of the annual salary of the Commissioner of ICAC, Mr. Simon Pei, and there are three main reasons. For he is the main culprit of the Timothy Tong case and Mr. Mark Fehman was allowed to receive the full contract graduity and Simon Pei forced the long-serving Ms. Rebecca Lee out of the door. Ms. Rebecca Lee should be the prime candidate for the Director of Operations. But she was demoted for no reason and eventually she left. There was a major personnel shakeup at ICAC. Multiple senior personnel have quit. And the annual dinner faced a boycott by more than 70% of the staff and could not continue. And the Director of Operations post was left vacant. And after Ms. Rebecca Lee left, Mr. Yasu Chun has been acting in the post, even though he decided to quit over the Rebecca Lee incident and was subsequently retained. But he's been at the position for two years plus one year in the acting capacity. The Director of Operations post has been left vacant and the ICAC has no deputy commissioner. It is unimaginable that such a vacant post has been left vacant for such a long time. And Mrs. Simon Pei has not explained the matter to the public or legal. For two years, I requested that the incident be proposed at the Panel on Security, but it was never included on the agenda. Simon Pei never came to the security panel at legal to explain his justifications. Earlier, the panel received a written response from the ICAC and I'd like to quote from that response. First, it says ICAC is a disciplined force with a small establishment and the number of candidates considered for promotion is relatively low. Contracts are granted for staff and it means that planning for personnel is relatively challenging. The ICAC would not prematurely make promotion decisions for the sake of filling out vacancies. And only candidates that fully satisfy the requirements would be promoted. Such an important post has been left vacant for three years and the ICAC still said no premature promotion decisions should be made. Where is the justification? When we look at other government departments, including discipline forces or other departments, would any head of department post be left vacant for three years? In the history of Hong Kong, has this ever happened? Earlier, the Director of Operations, Mr. Chee Man Kean, who has served the ICAC for 40 years, when addressing my question at the council, said that in his 40 years, the Director of Operations has ever been left vacant for three years once. And that is after the demotion of Ms. Rebecca Lee and the acting arrangement of Mr. Yasu Chun. And this is the only occurrence he has witnessed in his 40 years. Of course, we would not call this normal. The Commissioner of ICAC is largely equivalent to the Secretary for Security while the Director of Operations is roughly equivalent to the rank of Commissioner of Police. Can you imagine the Commissioner of Police post being left vacant for three years? What has happened to Hong Kong? Such an important enforcement agency has seen a vacancy in such an important post. This is unreasonable. Simon Pei said that all requirements must be met before a promotion can be made. So what did he actually mean in terms of experience, ability, character, leadership? Both Ms. Rebecca Lee and Ms. Yasu Chun have served in the ICAC for more than 20 years. They have the experience, the capability. So what more are you asking for? Do you need them to plead their allegiance to the Chinese Communist Party? Or would they have to listen to their superiors on which cases to investigate and which should be let go? The government should have a transparent promotion mechanism to deal with promotions in a reasonable manner. As we see it now, there is much favoritism. So long as Simon Pei said, "Not all the criteria are met, no matter how long you have served at the ICAC and regardless of the commendations and merits you received in the past by the Commissioner or other heads, Simon Pei is the only person to decide whether or not you are fit for promotion and I do not need to explain my grounds." At an earlier question-and-answer session at the council, I put a question to Carrie Lam, the chief executive, who is the only director superior of Simon Pei. Carrie Lam said this post is very important and she would not interfere with the personnel of the ICAC. So what did she mean? This is not an assistant officer, a chief officer, but this is the Director of Operations. Why doesn't Carrie Lam ask Simon Pei to confirm such important appointment? Has Carrie Lam been ignoring the situation? Or is she instructing Simon Pei to ensure that the candidate for the Director of Operations must be obedient before a promotion is allowed? I cited part of the documents submitted by Simon Pei. His explanation was shocking and the response was so poor that it's hard to imagine. In the last paragraph, he said that according to an annual survey conducted by the ICAC, public support towards ICAC has remained at a high level of 96% and above. So the acting and actual arrangement of certain posts did not affect the overall operation of the ICAC. Simon Pei lacks common or simple logic. How can he be Commissioner of the ICAC? First of all, this survey only reflected public views. Does public impression equal the work or progress of the ICAC's work? This is just ridiculous. The ICAC conducted a survey themselves and said that they received very high support. Did he look at other surveys? HKU conducts regular surveys on the discipline forces. And last year, ICAC ranked last among all discipline forces. And it now hovers at the second or third last among the forces. ICAC used to be a prestige organization and now it has deteriorated so much and Simon Pei is still feeling proud about it. I feel very sad to see this. I once served at the ICAC, albeit not for a very long time. I realize that it is not easy for the ICAC to build its reputation in the last decades. The forerunners used to have very limited resources and they had to fight the longstanding corruption cartels or groups. And the volume of the corruption amounted to hundreds of billions of dollars. The efforts against these groups were the results of our forerunners and the public in Hong Kong for decades. And this is how the ICAC builds its reputation. But Simon Pei, as Commissioner of the ICAC, caused the demise of ICAC and he is still feeling good about the situation. So I feel extremely sad. I'm sure many people would feel sad just like me. We used to be proud for having the ICAC. Our anti-corruption efforts were a model for the international community. But today, the ICAC cannot even manage very basic personnel decisions. So who is the culprit? It is Simon Pei. Chairman, as I said in the first time, in order to reinstate the ICAC's reputation, we have to fight corruption externally and remove barriers internally, namely Simon Pei. And the ICAC calls itself the pride of Hong Kong. But if Simon Pei is allowed to continue to corrupt the ICAC hierarchy, it would lead to a downfall. And as the only director superior of Simon Pei, Carrie Lam, the chief executive, should also be responsible. For such an important head of department post, there there has not been a clear candidate for three years. So with a deep heart, I propose my amendment. I request to reduce the annual remuneration of Simon Pei and he should leave the ICAC sooner than later. Thank you.
Mr. James To. Chairman, this is my last speech in this session. And I also want to talk about the ICAC. I have been a legislator for quite some time. All along, I always want to uphold this value of mine. Since the ICAC is independent of the administration, the system that the past governors established is a special one. So unless there's a major problem, and we shouldn't, of course, not be talking about the promotion of a particular person. Or if not for some size of a political intervention or intervention by certain outside party. We shouldn't be saying too much about ICAC. But when we find out that there are problems, we should speak out. And ICAC accepts this council as a body providing the proper check and balance. We're now talking about the second most senior officer in the ICAC. And the post has been left vacant or that only someone is acting in the post. This is unusual. You can't say that a few, only a few officers in ICAC, unlike the police where they have more officers and succession plans can be arranged more smoothly. Or that we need to make sure that the candidate for promotion is suitable in all respects. But it's a fact that the ICAC has a small staff complement. Well, actually, if you are to choose someone from among the staff, that's all you have. The limited number of officers there. So when Mr. Simon Pei wants to select someone to be the Head of Operations, and let's look at the police force. Well, perhaps the Commissioner of Police may be regarded as a suitable candidate because he has a force of tens of thousands of officers. But people may be alarmed if we were to say that the police commissioner should then have the ICAC Operations Department. But the ICAC carries out very special duties and their cases are somehow not the same as cases handled by the police. So is there a so-called most suitable candidate? Or the most appropriate candidate for this post? If someone is sound in all respects or the performance is more than competent. Actually, we are talking about someone who is much, way, way better than this. If the ICAC officers think that this person is somewhat okay, then that would be good enough. But you will say that I want the best. All right, find me one. Or you may argue that why don't we ask the retired heads of operations, one of them, to come back? They may be in their seventies. But that may be possible provided that they are physically capable of doing this. Now, we just learned that the Malaysian election has returned a ninety-two-year-old politician as their Prime Minister. But if, after acting for so long, the candidate is still not appointed, so what is the Commissioner waiting for? We are concerned that you are waiting for the conclusion of a particular case in question to be decided by the head. Should this be true, then it's a big cause for alarm. The security panel invited the Commissioner of ICAC to come to explain the arrangement. And it was instead of giving them, the panel, a few pages of document. But they said it's intervention. It's a management question. We have left a post vacant for years. And of course, we shouldn't intervene in the management of the ICAC. But at least the Commissioner should explain to the public what the difficulties are. Can that be a solution? Would the problems be solved in four, five, or six years? And that's what we want, some discussion in this council. And you know, the ICAC recognizes this council as a monitoring body on the work of the ICAC. They have committees to oversee their work. But ICAC has repeatedly said that they are not independent to everyone. And this council plays a monitoring role in their work. Now let me turn to the role of the CEO. The CEO is saying that the ICAC is independent and she will not intervene. Well, I to some extent respect her stance. But the Commissioner is himself appointed by the administration. And now the Commissioner manages this department. And maybe public confidence can be boosted if the Commissioner is allowed to run the department without outside interference. But you have to remember that this Commissioner was formerly the Director of Immigration. In other words, he does not really know very much about operations in the ICAC. He was appointed as an outsider. He was appointed to provide some sort of segregation between different parts of the ICAC and to project an image of independence. So he's at a higher level, the level of reaching out or projecting the image of the ICAC to the public. And the Commissioner, in terms of power, can override the decision of the Head of Operations. But in reality, we know internally speaking, the decision of the Head of Operation would be respected because the Commissioner is not actually the promoter from within the ranks. But now this post of Heads of Operation has been left vacant for years and someone who was not an ICAC officer was, had been appointed to head the ICAC. And then he had the power, he has the power to either confirm or not confirm the acting Head of Operation. If you ask the public, who do you trust more? The Commissioner or the Head of Operation? Well, you must command some public trust before people can say, I believe in you. Mrs. Carrie Lam says she respects the Commissioner and he wouldn't do anything about this. I would say that in this regard, it's a direction of duty. I'm not saying that the CEO should select a Head of Operation and bypass the I Commissioner. But I would say that at least she should ask questions about the appointment of the Head of Operations. The public are concerned whether this situation has got anything to do with a sensitive case. And this current CEO is somewhat indirectly involved in that case. And yet the CEO says she wouldn't intervene. What would people think about this, about this state of affairs? This goes through the basic trust we have in Hong Kong. In recent years, CPG leaders have been cracking down on corruption very vehemently. But if we do this, if we are select on prevention of corruption, then we have done a disservice to the country. And if someone tries to intervene in the work of the ICAC, then not only the CEO should be concerned, the leaders of our country should also be concerned. Because SAR officials are appointed by the CPG. If we want to set up an objective system of oversight, we have the, there are committees overseeing the work of the ICAC. And now even the mainland is trying to set up something independent of the party. So are we doing the right thing here? If someone can wield all the influence and cover up everything in Hong Kong, shouldn't the CPG take a look at this? Or someone may query that, well, Mr. To, you want to turn the ICAC into a tool of the CPG? Well, if they wanted to, they could have done this. But now at the face of it, there are quite a number of possibilities. Then we should not allow the ICAC, the system, to fight corruption, to be influenced, unduly influenced by the different parties, including foreign powers or vested interests or big corporations. We must show people that we are determined in fighting corruption. Members may not vote in favor of the proposed amendment, the proposed cut in the expenditure. But when you are asked about your views, I hope you will speak your mind so that the campaign to fight corruption, both here in Hong Kong and on the mainland, can be conducted smoothly.
Dr. Helena Wong. Chairman, I move an amendment on slashing the salary of the Secretary for Food and Health for one month. And then I would also speak about Mr. Gary Fan's amendment in slashing the expenditure for buying Dongjiang water at a cost of four point eight billion dollars. Now, in the last session, I talked about the shortage of healthcare professionals, the inadequate supply of public niches and without consultation, a fixed period of the use of the niches is also proposed. Now, I'm going to talk about food labeling. There is quite a wide portfolio under the SFH. But then there are so many flaws in his, in her policies. When I talk about food safety, we send, that the government has sent staff to inspect on registered farms on the mainland, which are supplying food in Hong Kong. And normally, they say the compliance rate is ninety point nine percent. But I said that we were constrained in a way because it is the mainland who arranges for us to visit the particular farms. So there is a problem. The SFH should strike for surprise checks on the mainland farms. Samples of soil and water and food items should be taken for inspection. On food safety and also food nutrition labeling, we are seeing a similar situation. The government has sent people to make inspections on the mainland, but they are cheating themselves and also us. Food labeling is important and consumers will learn about the food ingredients by the food nutrition labeling, the expiry date, and so on. Certain items are specified in the food labeling. But if the wrong information is put there to mislead consumers, then it is unfair to the consumers and health hazards may be created. And it is also against the law to do that. Every year, the AVHD has some set work objectives. He said that it is ensured that prepackaged food comes with correct labeling. And in checking on the food labeling, some fifty-five thousand labels we check every year. Unfortunately, the government has not given us a compliance rate. And in 2011, the Audit Commission released a report stating that the pass rate of food labeling is ninety nine point nine percent. And the Audit Commission also engaged a local university to check on the samples of food which are sold in the market. And for seventy samples checked, and sixty percent of them are not in compliance with the food labeling requirements. And the Consumer Council has released a report on butter and margarine. And it was found that fifty percent of the butter and margarine come with food labeling whose information is not correct. So in other words, the nutrient ingredients as listed on the labeling is not in line with the actual ingredients after checking. And there is a high percentage, fifty percent, sixty percent, whereby the food ingredients listed on the label is not the actual nutrients found in the food item. So it's very far cry from the ninety-nine percent as stated by the government. Is it the case that the food labeling doesn't come with any problem? But in the Consumer Council and the university surveys is found that, well, the fifty percent or sixty percent of the labels do not carry the correct information. So there is a great mistake there, a great deviation. The AVHD told us that the food items are safe, there is no pesticide residue, no heavy metal contaminants, ninety-nine percent of no problem. We are cheating ourselves here. Now, in vegetables, we often found that there is an exceedance of heavy metals. And we need to revise the standards because the standards are problematic themselves. And when we come to food labeling, well, the people are trying to do something in accordance with the law, but they are not doing it properly. Now, whether it's trans fat and also Now, whether it's trans fat and also carcinogenic materials, they are not listed in the labeling or the information given to you is incorrect. So it's it's a big trouble. So the we may uh then add legislation, but then people are not following the legislation stringently. So I hope that the F H B and particular F V H D must pay particular attention to food safety and food labeling issues. So if the food labeling information is not trustworthy, is inaccurate, then consumers will have have um no standards to go by in choosing the um food items to purchase. So we just look at whether there is mold on the food. I mean, it's a primitive way on checking food. I mean, this is totally unacceptable. I think the F V H B must do more on this. Another issue. Um amendment number sixty seven raised by Mister Gary Fan, and that is head one nine four Water Supplies Department, subhead two 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 three. Mister Fan is proposing to slash twenty head two uh two two three and subhead one nine four to slash an amount of four point seven nine five billion dollars. And that is roughly equivalent to the whole year expenditure for buying Dongjiang water um of the W S D, and that amounts to around four point nine billion dollars. I have wondered whether I should support it. Well, if I support it, then we will slash the amount of four point nine billion dollars. And then we will not have water to drink because only twenty percent of local water consumption comes from Hong Kong's reservoirs. We have allocated money to build the desalination plant in Chiang Kwan Well. But it's a project that will materialize only um in in the long term future. And it only supplies five percent of our total consumption. And we rely on the long term on Dongjiang water, and it the cost is four point nine billion dollars. So if we slash the amount, then we will have no water to drink. I won't support this amendment, but when Mister Fan moved this amendment, he has his own considerations, I believe. What is of concern is that we are paying four point eight billion dollars per year. Do you think the amount is well spent? Well, you may say it's government money, but it's our money uh too. And the government is generous in paying this four point eight billion dollars every year. And I've told the government many times, well, rather than paying four point eight billion dollars per year and also the Dongjiang um water will, I mean, there will be increasing cost for buying Dongjiang water. Should we be investing more in building our own water infrastructure? What do we mean by that? It includes a lot of things. For example, we can recycle water. Um then that kind of system is a water infrastructure. We can build desalination plant. There is an additional source of water. There is another water infrastructure. And that's about it. And for so many years, we haven't explored, I mean, we haven't built new reservoirs. And Singapore has been working hard. They would like to use every drop of local water collected, and there is no waste. We visited Singapore, there was this bay, and then several years later when we visited it. And there was a dam built there and a reservoir was built or provided. But we've for many years, we haven't had a new reservoir. Uh from the year when we were born up to now, there has not been any new reservoir built. Uh the original uh reservoirs we have, for example, the Kowloon clusters of reservoirs. And they were built just to cope with the relatively smaller population back then. Uh we've seen a population growth. So these reservoirs cannot cope with the demand. The how come that the government has not reviewed the situation? Can we maybe dig deeper into the existing reservoirs, expand the reservoirs so that the capacity can be increased? Or maybe doubled even? Or um increased by three times? So can that kind of work be done? Maybe you could you can also identify locations where a new reservoir can be built. For for many years, I've never seen the government taking action um in that uh respect. We are paying four point eight billion dollars for Dongjiang uh river. We have a surplus of a hundred and fifty billion dollars. Can we do more in building water infrastructure? In the debate debate, among the eighteen options, there is this option uh of uh filling the reservoirs to build housing. I think that's an absurd proposal. Now, this absurd proposal is listed as one of the options. Isn't that a problem with the government? We are asking for increasing water resources. You are proposing filling the water reservoir. You talk about opening up the country parks, but then the country parks are catchment areas for water. Say, if you take five percent, ten percent of the fringe of the country parks for building housing, then water resources in Hong Kong will only decrease. Well, you may say that it's just consultation, but it it does show that the government doesn't attach uh importance in protecting water resources uh in Hong Kong. So Mister Fan is moving this motion. And we are asking the government to review um this what efforts they put in to protect water resources. Also, we are also proposing increasing new water resources. We are paying a lot on the desalination plant, which supplies only five percent of the total consumption. Ten years um after it was commissioned, it can only provide ten percent at the maximum uh of total water consumption. We are spending four point eight billion dollars. We are building a desalination plant. And then there is also a great leakage of water pipes. And the Audit Commission just released this report criticizing harshly the W S D. You pay four point eight billion dollars to buy water, but then the old uh the pipes are getting old and there is heavy water leakage. The W S D said that we are doing a fine job already because the water seepage um from the pipes, um we used to have a twenty five percent. Now it's been lowered to around fifteen percent now. They think they are already doing a good job, but the problem is, well, we should reflect upon ourselves. Well, let's look at the neighboring regions. In Tokyo, the water seepage is a rate is two percent only. Singapore, five percent. Korea, so five percent. Sydney, eight percent. How come that our government is said that we are doing fine? The rate has been slashed from twenty five percent to fifteen percent? It's a good performance. It's outrageous. What kind of government do we have here? And the Audit Commission has criticized them. Then they said the future target is to decrease the water leakage rate to less than ten percent. And I don't know what exactly do they man mean? Is it nine point nine percent or what? I don't think it's acceptable. Well, we buy, we pay for every drop of water we get. The government has been asking the public to conserve water, but then they are wasting the water water resources themselves. I mean, it's not pardonable. And this fifteen percent rate is grossly unacceptable. We must have a plan and a clear timetable to further slash the water leakage rate to a rate which is similar to Singapore's, and that is five percent. This is something that we must do urgently. Another thing. And about the aging of the water pipes. The government said that it is uh replacing the three thousand kilometers of water pipes in phases. But then some um we have many um water pipes which are aging. There is this newspaper report saying that now there is uh um there are stones and mud and asphalt and so on coming from the water uh after turning on the switching on the turning on the water tap. And that might have to do with the aging water pipes. You have a surplus of a hundred and fifty billion dollars. Why don't you use it to urgently replace these old water pipes which are going which might also be bursting too? Doctor Kwakaki.
Chairman, I have um some opinions on how you arrange for the timing of the debate. In the debate yesterday, uh many members, including myself, have not fully expressed our views.
I hope this would not happen again in the um appropriation bill next year. I hope you can um support my amendment number on to deduct half the annual remuneration of the chief executive. A number of members propose amendments on different policy areas, and I see Mister Patrick Nip, the secretary for Constitutional and Mainland Affairs here. And no one proposes to deduct his salary. And there were only deductions made on certain mainland offices and Guangdong offices. But there were news yesterday that after the disqualifications and restrictions on candidates, there were rumors that some confirmation statements would be introduced in next year's district council elections. If I knew about the news earlier, I would have proposed the amendments earlier. But why is everyone so generous on Mister Patrick Nip? I think people realize that some secretaries can seldom affect the policymaking of the government. Has the secretary or chief executive tried to defend one country, two systems and the basic law, et cetera, with the constant political screening? Hong Kong people's freedom to run for politics might be further restricted. It has been more than twenty one years since the handover. The chief executive and her principal officials have been a complete failure in defending the um um Hong Kong people ruling Hong Kong. And with the disqualifications, how can we defend the separation of powers at Hong Kong? There is a very big question mark. With the design of the basic law, Hong Kong's bedrock for success lies in its system. And with the respect and separation of three powers, Hong Kong is able to achieve um proper administration. But who is taking the lead in eroding the system? Who else besides Carrie Lam? So members talked about different issues such as healthcare, drinking water, et cetera. We can see that the government has even lost the motivation to seek justice for its people. Some people say that after the the handover, we would um Hong Kong would slowly be eroded. But now we are in a pan of boiling water. For district councils, area committees, or Kaifeng associations, we see that the government has joined forces with pro Beijing camps and um they have jeopardized the interests of Hong Kong. Carrie Lam has been with the government for more than thirty years. She is very smart. Every time there is a controversy, she makes it look like that he she was not involved for the disqualification of political members and candidates such as Agnes Chow. So um they um she is hiding behind a returning officer. And Miss Charisa Chang um also excuses herself from any blame. And the returning officer said she already sought legal advice. So what kind of legal advice is that? Would any legal advice allow erosion of one country, two systems? For civil servants such as Carrie Lam, they chose to ignore the facts. Hong Kong's collapse is thanks to people like these. So truth has been skewed and political crackdowns have become the norm. I'd like to talk about the so-called beneficial policies promulgated by Carrie Lam. I'd first like to talk about Lam. She was she spent five years as secretary for um development and um five years at the chief secretary. And every time she was asked about land, she said she handed the job to the task force on land supply. And Mister Stanley Wong should be the one to ask. So what she said has been meaningless and untrue. And Stanley Wong said that by two oh two six, Hong Kong relents one hundred and eight hectares of land. So the average waiting time for housing is four point seven years and three hundred people, three hundred thousand people are waiting. So of the one hundred and three hundred hectares of brownfield sites, five hundred are included in new development areas, but the rest, nothing would be done. We there are plots which are um uh which spend a few dozen hectares, but they are deemed too little. And some sites could be dealt with with the land resumption ordinance. But Carrie Lam said they cannot do anything because there would be controversy. If you are so afraid of controversy, why are you seeking to disqualify members at the Court of Final Appeal? You are abusing your powers. So they would do whatever it takes at the Court of First Instance Court of Final Appeal, et cetera. Land is a major issue, and this is not just about developers. There is a high land price policy, and the government is the culprit for the shortage of housing. You criticize Donald Chung, but what about the other officials? What about the officials who are here today, including Carrie Lam? What were you doing at the time? You pushed the blame onto everyone else. And you just want to take the accolades, but none of the blame. Carrie Lam has some tried to hide behind procedures. And so she is not to blame for for land or housing. And she would shift the blame um to people who are against land reclamation or developing country parks. And um she is blaming the green groups and Leshco. The government does not know how what to do with thousands of hectares of land. What did Carrie Lam say? She told Ming Paul that some public housing is not profitable. But she came up with the um the um G F S some system for the um, well, one of the projects, it is very profitable. And she is creating very long waiting times. And she is creating very long waiting times. And they are siding with the developers to push up the prices, which is disgraceful. And moreover, the government's policy does not welcome Hong Kong people. So high prices are not an issue for the rich people. And there would be a lot of mainland buyers or the so-called New Hong Kong people. And for this for this year, they are making available two thousand units. Even if they are made available, the average price is twenty thousand dollars per square foot or more for revenue from land sales, stamp duty, etc. There would not be any financial issues. So the government is accumulating wealth for sure, but they are not for Hong Kong people. Our reserves at the Maori Authority would dissipate, and the capital would be moved to the north. Hong Kong people has been tortured in areas like education, healthcare, housing. The government has said they have done their best. For healthcare, for almost twenty years, the government has spent two point five to two point seven percent of the GDP. They have ignored population aging, and they have no dedication. Every year, more than six thousand elderly people pass away. And the secretary said she is not to be blamed. And the government and the secretary have been shifting the blame. Just now, Mr. Lam Ching-Tang criticized Simon Pei. Of course, he is to criticize, but who has allowed this chaos at the ICAC? Can you say Carrie Lam is not to be blamed? Or that she doesn't know anything? So the more demise Hong Kong is, the easier it is to govern it or manage it. If you are in a chaos or mess, and if this persists, no one can even tell the right from wrong or the black from white. This is what we are facing. The Education Bureau has tried to amend some of the contents of the Chinese history textbooks. They take away the word handover or that Hong Kong is in the south of China. So you should not criticize the Japanese anymore because you are doing the same at Hong Kong. These are people who are making a living out of the money of Hong Kong people. But they are piling on misery for Hong Kong. And Carrie Lam is the one taking the lead. So people like Patrick Nip should not, has no reason to feel comfortable. You are part of the team. So if the whole team is hurting Hong Kong, you cannot absolve yourself of blame. For the budget, we can never achieve something right or correct because no one would ever listen. The only way is to name the responsible officers and Carrie Lam so that Hong Kong people will know what is happening. I hope members will support my amendment. Thank you.
Dr. Jiang Chong Tai, thank you, Madam Deputy. The Malaysian election has just been completed. No one knew beforehand that the revolution would be successful. So we believe that people always win at the end of the day. I will be offering more comments on the budget in the third reading stage. In this session, I have fifteen minutes. I will be speaking on the amendments moved by members. I may not be able to cover everything because of time limit. There are sixty-five from members and two from the government. First of all, there is an amendment to cut the CEO's office expenditure. I support that. If the CEO's office cannot even manage to use the Facebook, well, maybe it's due to lack of supervision or incompetence. And then a staff said this is about reconciliation. And then you put a political party on the stage. But that staff will not be dismissed. Otherwise, it would be a PR disaster because that would be an admission of lack of proper supervision. So I speculate that other staff of the CEO's office helped out to provide a remedy. So I think it's only reasonable to cut the expenditure or the provisions for CEO's office. And also, there are suggestions to cut the remuneration and allowance for the non-official members of the X Code. And there's another suggestion, a relation to AFCD's provisions. Some of the business should not be handled by AFCD. For example, catching stray cats and dogs. There are a lot of NGOs which are well-equipped to implement the so-called trap neuter and release project. Many are doing this, especially in Samsui Po. The AFCD may need some of the current provisions to deal with wild boars and other wild animals, animals not familiar to the general public. So does the AFCD need thirty-two million dollars to deal with stray animals? It's a waste of money. And also the so-called humane treatment or euthanizing the animals. That means killing animals. This is not acceptable in a civilized community like ours. I think we should all go for as little euthanization as possible. Turning to Commissioner of Correctional Services, number six, moved by Mr. Chan Chi Chin. I support this. I support the docking of the whole year's pay of the commissioner. Because I don't think the cross of the matter or the controversy is not about inmates' rights. But the CSD has always been a mysterious department for years. There's no one to oversee the work of the CSD. And the commissioner of the department may be supervised by the security of the Secretary for Security or the CEO or by someone in the government. No, there's no one outside the government to monitor it. So are they doing the job based on basic humanistic criteria? And I support the amendment in respect of pick-up. Elizabeth Quark says that these people are there to serve a term, a sentence, not to take a vacation. But what we are asking for is just humane treatment of inmates. I hope the amendments would improve the management of CSD and to make it more transparent. So I support this amendment to slash the full year's pay of the commissioner. Turning to number nine, moved by Mr. Chi Hoytak, and that is to cut half the provisions for the Sustainable Land Tower Office. And there's another one, to cut the pay of Director of Environmental Protection. These are related amendments. They want to develop land tower in a sustainable manner. But the criticism is that this is not sustainable development. It's an attempt to destroy the natural environment or land tower in the name of sustainability. Why do we want to cut half of the budget for this office? Because half of the duties of this office should be taken up by the Director of Environmental Protection and Secretary for the Environment. And now you just deploy some officers to the Sustainable Land Tower Office. And people have criticized the Secretary for the Environment as a Buddhist secretary, i.e. a passive one. So I support the slashing of half of the provision for this Sustainable Land Tower Office. And also support cutting the pay of the Director of Environmental Protection. A person, the director attends functions where you have photo opportunities. So if we cut this particular post, perhaps we can save paper. So from a Buddhist perspective, cutting the pay of the director can be environmentally friendly. Now let me jump to number fifteen. That is the Youth Internship Subsidy Scheme, Youth Mainland Internship Subsidy Scheme. For me, I lived in Beijing for five to six years. For a whole year during that period, I was doing a few investigations in Dongguan. That's why, after I returned, I realized how important our systems, our land, our environment are so important. Because I saw so much on the mainland, things that I don't think any human being would find acceptable. So we should allow our young people to have internship opportunities on the mainland. Because after they have done this, they will return to Hong Kong and treasure everything here. But I agree to the proposed cut of the provisions because they have not done a good job. So if we want to learn about life on the mainland, we should look at the real thing instead of going to the Bay Area and look at some model projects. And now they allow the two of three to four interns or young people to join such a duty visit or group tour. It's just going to be a very small project. Now turn to sixteen. I very much support this proposal to cut the full year's pay of the Secretary for Home Affairs. We have devoted a lot of our speeches to the loopholes and problems of the vetting system of various subsidy schemes run by the Home Affairs Bureau. Back in the CY Tong era, we had the two municipal councils. Things were relatively transparent. But after the abolition of the municipal councils, the district councils were demoted. They were not given sufficient power and money to do the job. And in the four years of CY Lang's administration, there was the need to give money to these district councils. There was too much. The government didn't know what to do with it, so they spent money indiscriminately with a vacuum in the vetting system. Of course, the Home Affairs Bureau should do the job. I won't speculate on the reasons, on whether the political background has got anything to do with this. But now in district councils, there are some gray areas. We don't know what interests should be declared, whether certain cases should be investigated by the ICAC. I think the Secretary for Home Affairs should bear the full responsibility. The Audit Commission has published reports pointing out the problems. And the Bureau responded by saying that they would talk to the ICAC. Well, they have already talked about this. So this would be one of the key issues in the coming DC elections. Time is limited, so maybe I should turn to another amendment. I would like to cover some more meaningful ones. Number twenty-eight, moved by Mrs. Chan Chi Chin in respect of Lands Department. Here, this is about the need for the Lands Department to speed up land supply by tying in with the task force's general debate. And also to expedite the land processing schemes, land processing processes, and also the creation of eighty-eight non-directory posts. And the proposal is to cut the expenditure on this. I personally received five campaigns against the work of the Lands Department. Over the years, the department failed to manage land in Hong Kong and the allocation of the size as well as irregularities. They have a squatter control unit. Some media took pictures of the officers working. They work by taking tours to inspect different villages. They work one hour, sixteen minutes out of an eight-day shift. It was reported by some media, photos were taken. If not for the media reports, we wouldn't have known about the direction of duty. It's not a question of shortage of manpower, but the management of this department is so sloppy. Other civil servants may be passive and reactive, but they are even more passive and reactive. They work in a vehicle. All right, I support number twenty-eight. Moving on to number twenty-nine, the pay of the Secretary for Justice. When she took office, we talked about the UBWs. And also recent cases point to some suggestions that she doesn't understand Hong Kong. She didn't even knew how to use a mic when speaking in this council. And now we have this felon, Mr. South Asian Asian, who was brought to the court. He was handcuffed. The suspect asked for the handcuff to be removed, but the CSD had no legal representative there. We are talking about a very serious suspect. But there was no legal representative to accompany the CSD officers in the court. So that's definitely direction of duty. And I also raised some queries about whether there is a scandal in And I also raised some queries about whether there's a scandal in carrying out prosecutions. They they cancelled some serious cases and allowed us some others to go forward.
Mister Tato, uh thank you, Madam Deputy. There have been comments saying that the budget this year would be passed the soonest among the five budgets. Um in the past few years, and that's not because the budget is not contentious. Or um F S U are very capable, it's just that the president has abused his authority. To limit the time uh for members to speak and to cut the number of amendments. Fourteen members have moved sixty seven amendments, are they all meaningless? It's it that um the amendments have no substance and nonsensical? No, how come that this is the case? When Mister Andrew Lang asked whether any public officer would like to speak, no one would like to respond. And after the members have spoken. And then according to the script, he would have invited the Chief Secretary for Administration to speak, he's not. He was not here, other public officers could speak for him, but no one public officer was willing to talk. And at that time, six pandemocrats would like to speak on the budget still. So what kind of legislature do we have now? The so-called president of the council uh was assisting the administration. He stopped members who would like to speak, so that's why we conducted our business smoothly, in quotation here. So our speaking time was limited. The council was here to help the administration, so that's Mister Andrew Lang's view. Uh I am now going to talk about my amendment, and that is to. Cuts the expenditure of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars under the E D B. And that is for developing teaching and learning resources for basic law education. And that is to say, the government uses such uh teaching resources to educate the students on basic law. And that covers both primary and secondary schools. For myself and the media, we have exposed a lot, uh the fact that these materials are brainwashing. And they're biased, we turn over the materials page by page. And we are not making these remarks casually. Whether is the uh teaching materials for the basic law, in the history, uh general studies, liberal studies in schools. There are biased uh descriptions which brainwash the students, there are so many examples of these. In terms of the basic law teaching and learning materials, who uh wrote up these materials? It is the government itself. In my question, I asked for a list of the membership or uh of the authors. And you refused to disclose it, you operated behind black box. You are teaching basic law to students. What kind of questions you do you like the student have? What kind of analysis do you like students to have? Well, do you? Do you asked the students whether you know process of rich is a is a panacea? And uh you said that in civil disobedience movements, you should not break the law. Or else the um society would be in chaos. Why are you teaching such things? Uh I understand that E D B officer will not answer my question. Is how the electrical works, members say something, the government officers will not respond, and then we still we're still passing the motions. There are um there are so many controversial issues in Hong Kong. Why don't we talk about the interpretation of the basic law by the M P C S C? And why don't we talk about the inter- the interpretations impact on the society? And the blow dealt to the um judicial system in Hong Kong. Uh we people have criticized uh the interpretation of the basic law as being done brutally. How come that this doesn't appear in the basic law teaching materials? Well, if there is this mentioning, uh well, the E D B of officers or the Secretary for Education can tell me where it is. How come that you are evading all these important issues? Why, why aren't you teaching uh Article one oh four of the basic law? Which has to do with the um oath taking, uh whether it can be used to disqualify the legislators? Why don't you mention this? And in the basic law, it also talks about the uh members of the public have a right to stand for election and the right to elect. So why um are are you asked, why aren't you asking students to think about? Um why candidates are disqualified for standing for election? Just because of some comments that they have made, why aren't these uh mentioned in the basic law teaching materials? And then uh we were discussing the colocation bill, and that has to do with Article eighteen. It says that apart from those listed in Annex Three, the mainland laws should not be implemented in Hong Kong. But then for the colocation arrangement bill, the uh West Cowland Terminus part has been ceded to the mainland. Whereby uh men mainland laws will be implemented. So uh this is blatantly going against the basic law. Of course, this is not mentioned here in existing materials, will that be mentioned in the future? When the Bar Association is also criticizing the colocation arrangements. Uh bill in breach of the basic law, they are not happy with the government's answer. Well, the basic law teaching materials also cover this. So I'm asking for a cut of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars here. I think it comes with good reasoning because. The government. Is uh teaching uh things um. That are in support of the administration, it's not about the basic law at all. It's not an academic dis- is discussion here in the teaching materials. It's a it's it's all part of discussion in the teaching of the basic law. And then if you wanted to teach, well, let's also mention about Article twenty six. Saying that Hong Kong public have the right to vote and the right to stand for election. Now, why don't you mention about the small sucker election, the F C not being representative? Well, even for district council elections, uh people might be disqualified for the election because of the political uh views. And then also Article twenty three, why don't you say the I C C P R is still valid in. Or Article thirty nine, and then there will be equal and universal suffrage in Hong Kong. And there will we will not have uh restrictions in our per- in our elections. So I hope that this can be covered. And also, in Article twenty two, it says that the uh province, autonomous region or municipality. May not interfere in Hong Kong's affairs. These articles have never been included in the basic law teaching materials issued by the government. So the uh the answer is so obvious. The money spent on basic law education is is a propagandist tool for the government. It is inappropriate, unjust, and you are brainwashing students and parents are um very angry about this. While we are talking about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars this year. In our questions on the budget, the government said that in from twenty fifteen up to now. Excluding the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, in the past five years. We have spent six point nine one million dollars on this brain uh washing uh education. I I don't know why this amount the amount this year is particularly uh too uh small. Or you might have published a lot of materials in the past, you can still use the old materials to continue with your brainwashing. I must emphasize this one point. When we asked who wrote this these materials, you said this. In the publication process, the E D B officers, the related officers in the E D B. Um published this, who are they? Why can't you give us the names? When you said that you consulted the uh the Department of Justice and the C M A B um in the process. You are also consulting the stakeholders, principals, teachers and experts who are um. Who have knowledge in constitution, the basic law. I mean, uh should should it be so mysterious? Why can't you give us the names? It is Ronnie Tong, Fanny uh Ritter, Fan or Maria Tam or who? How come that you can't give us a list? And then it continues to say, uh they don't have a list here. They have not con- solicited the consent of those who have provided the advice, so they can't give us their names. The materials are so biased. Maybe you have consulted pro Beijing, pro government uh people, you can't give us the names because their consent has not been obtained. It's not just about uh basic law education. In the uh review mechanism of all textbooks, the same applies. Well, instead of saying review, I think it's a censoring instead. There are so many uh government departments reviewing all sorts of um applications. Well, on whether licenses should be issued. I mean, they are giving us a list of people who are doing the review. And for the Chinese History Textbook Review Panel, I asked this question. Well, apart from basic law teaching materials, I asked who are reviewing the textbooks for Chinese History textbooks. I also think I um posed the same question, who is reviewing? The E D B's reply is the same, no, we can't tell you. Because they said if we give you the names of the review panel, there may be a conflict of interest. The review, the people who review the textbooks, and that they will know about the names of the publishers, and that's not fair. And the publishers know about the uh people on the review people, that's not fair too, because there might be collusion and so on. They also claim that they have consulted the I C A C S uh too, it's unreasonable. You might put in anti-corruption measures. You can ask these review panelists to declare their interest, and then you can also disclose their names. Uh so that they can be monitored by the public as well. Uh the public and the parents. Do not know who are reviewing uh the textbooks of students. We are in the dark on this, uh about who are doing this kind of political censoring. Then these uh review panelists uh do not have any credibility. The government has been spending uh close to seven million dollars on textbooks, and this year you are applying for a fund of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um is the government being properly scrutinized? Are they doing things openly and in a transparent way? We are talking about an education policy here. Uh the um teaching materials for basic law, uh Chinese history, teaching materials, teaching materials, uh general studies, teaching materials. As parents and stakeholders in the education sector, there's no way we can know who published published these materials. The government refuses to name the officers in the government who publish it. And they the government refuses to give us the names of the review panelists. We never know, get to know. Or 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 rather, we would never agree to this kind of uh uh closed door um approach or mechanism. So for this budget, I am suggesting uh cutting the. Uh amount to be spent on basic law teaching and learning materials. I hope that the government can listen up. To the views of the education sector and parents. Uh we. Would like to know the people who are brainwashing our students, who are politically censoring these um. Textbooks, we are against such a kind of approach. So I'm suggesting this slash of an amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I hope that other members can also um support my amendment. And also the administration can respond to this amendment. So uh the pro-establishment camp will not just press a button to endorse it, to negate it or rather.
Financial Secretary, would you like to speak again? Last week, I have explained to members the um context and contents of the two amendments. Proposed by the administration, and I have nothing to add. I hope members will support these two amendments, so that the public can benefit from the Carrying and Sharing Scheme. In an earlier debate. I would respond to their views in the next session. Mister Ray Chen, would you like to speak again? Chairman. The committee stage of the Appropriation Bill twenty eighteen. Has entered the last round of speeches before the voting. And by convention, I since I was the first to speak and I would be the last as well. And after that, we would proceed to the voting, so I urge. Members who wish to vote to come back to the chamber. This morning, there was a um news headline. Saying that some the appropriation bill would be passed soonest in the last five years. In fact, the this is the fast or the quickest exercise. In five years, and the um committee stage wait last less than forty hours. Chairman. The number of amendments this year is the lowest in recent in recent years. The members and the F S together. Proposed sixty seven amendments, of which two were proposed by the Financial Secretary. Despite this, um the president still deems this number too high, so Madam Deputy. Going from five or six hundred amendments to five or fifty or sixty amendments, and you still call it too much. So what should be the appropriate number of amendments? In the eyes of the government and the Pro Beijing Camp, even one amendment is too many. After we propose our amendments, the administration would cut would offer a reply. They would say that they would um object to all the amendments, or even. Our um amendments are all in breach of the rules of procedure. But um. No matter how um dominating the president is, he cannot turn down. Amendments that are in line with the R O P from. Mister Jasper Chang and Mister Andrew Lang. Well, um in your eyes, um there might be a progress. And um. There used to be um sequential um amendments. And right now, only one amendment is um allowed per member, per head. So um every year before the appropriation bill, um reporters would ask. Whether I would filibuster, and I would say, no, there is no filibustering this year at all. There are so few amendments. And the um time spent on um scrutiny is the shortest ever, and the rules of procedure have been amended. And we only have five or six members, and some people from the public. Are wondering whether or why we don't ring the bell or call for quorum. We propose a lot of amendments. And we want to explain to fellow members, the public and the government, why we propose these amendments. A number of Pro Beijing Camp members spoke on our amendments. But I cannot offer a reply one by one. Because the time I have is extremely limited at the committee stage. Last year, I spoke seventeen times. Last year, I spoke seventeen times. And um I proposed even more amendments than this year. This year, not counting this current round, I only spoke five times. I proposed fifty eight amendments and thirty one were approved. I spoke five times and two of them were um addressing the secretary. And for the remaining three rounds, I had to um explain my thirty one amendments, this is just impossible. So Miss Alokin spoke. Very rapidly and I I told him that some even if you go so fast, it doesn't mean people can understand what you. Are saying, you are just making life difficult for the um simultaneous and sign interpreters. I didn't even have enough time to read out all my thirty one amendments. To be fair, you should have a separate session for the government, you and now you're eating into our speaking time. Some people ask whether the amendments to the R O P um lead to a um shorter um. Time spent on the committee stage of this bill, this is not the main reason. The reason is that the um president is exercising his boundless powers. To determine the time spent on the debate during committee stage. If you deem my thirty one amendments which were approved to be reasonable. Shouldn't you give me reasonable time to explain these to the public? Chairman, this is completely irrelevant, I want to tell fellow members and the public. Why I cannot explain my thirty one amendments one by one to seek your support and at the end. So some people would say I don't have the justifications for deducting the expenses of the um. Correction services um department, et cetera. Well, I have the grounds, but I don't have the time to explain them. And the pro establishment camp says that the um pro democracy is only proposing meaningless amendments, they are frivolous. And um while all those amendments have been um. Disallowed and what is remaining are all very um me meaningful. So I want to highlight. Some of the amendments on Head one four four Constitutional and Mainland Affairs. So my amendment serves to deduct the annual salary of the um. Secretary for Constitutional and Mainland Affairs, it's not the list because it was already consolidated. Into Mr. Eddie Chu's amendment, a deduction of. One hundred forty three point seven eight million dollars to deduct. The Beijing Liaison Office, um Shanghai Office, Chengdu Office, et cetera. But according to the president's ruling. Under this um head, I can speak on the deduction of the annual remuneration of the secretary. Or from Constitutional and Mainland Affairs, I was infuriated at the former secretary Raymond Tam. And he failed to proceed with constitutional reform and under program four of C M A B. Personal rights, personal rights are again within your ambit, but you refuse to do anything. So you might as well um just dissolve the bureau. Mister Patrick Nip, Patrick Nip is in his first year in office, so I still have some expectations of him. I'm referring to the improvement of rights of sexual minorities. So the consultation group to eliminate discrimination against minorities. Um the work finished around twenty fifteen. And the government was only still following up on the recommendations of this working group. Those recommendations are very straightforward and simple. Every year you would say that you are following up on the recommendations. And we do not see when there will be consultation on legislation. The Equal Opportunities Commission submitted two reports to the government, but they came to nothing. The Chinese University. Worked with seventy five companies, including Law Society Bar Association, financial institutions. Multinationals, et cetera. Last year. They urged the government to legislate against um discrimination against sexual minorities. Against uh again, it came to nothing, even the chairman of the E O C said um they are frustrated at a at a lack of response from the government. The E O C is a body to um promote equal opportunities. And battle discrimination in the last few years. Government funding and recognition was very limited. York Chow said he wanted to meet Raymond um Tam, but Raymond Tam was reluctant. But I think um the the now secretary Patrick Nip. Um did um visit the E O C. I hope this is not just a P R exercise, the government should um put more resources. And legislation is another matter, you need to carry out the administrative and planning work. Every year. You would explain the progress of your um human rights work to the United Council, uh the United Nations. The um then secretary Mister Lau Kong Hua was asked. If um without legislation, how can you safeguard the um rights of those being discriminated? This is certainly a challenging and contentious issue, but at least you should um get started. So if there was a huge backlash, um that would be understandable. But the government is obliged to. Push forward the um legislation against um discrimination. The on the eighteenth of um May, there will be an event at Chater Garden. To um stand against homophobia and for number forty seven. Under Head one four three deduction of twenty three point seven million dollars. Deduction on the um budget used by the Civil Service Bureau on the um National Affairs Study Program. This is what it says on the um C S B website. In the last decades, our country has undergone major changes in the economy, culture, politics, et cetera. And the um um mid-ranking um civil servants have plenty of exposure to mainland matters. And since two thousand and six, the C S B commissioned Beijing University and Sun Yat-sen University. To. Create a study program on mainland uh affairs, more than fourteen hundred people have participated. And this year's budget would be twenty three point seven million dollars. The Chinese government does not um require civil servants to know about the country. But they are asked to know about the um nature of of the party or be loyal to the C C P. So in the past year. For um trained civil servants who um. Who know how to um disqualify members or ask the right questions. They apparently know um the needs of the party. And um and in Shandong, there was a um party education center. And it is equipped with um. Part party-based internet services, party-based control, party-based um counseling, virtual reality technology, et cetera. And. It serves to um instill a sense of party to civil service. They only spend seven hundred thousand yuan, which is less than one million Hong Kong dollars. So they should come to Hong Kong and build a party training center. So it it would be better than spending more than twenty million dollars a year. And you are sending one or two hundred um mid-ranking civil servants to the mainland.
Uh is as if uh they got some uh spiritual inspiration after attending the programs. Uh according to Mister Raymond Chan. So let's have this uh. New service introduced on the mainland instead of spending this sum of money on national studies. Uh the the committee will now vote on, put to vote the amendments.